Small but mighty mints if you'd like some.
I'll get you.
Folks, if you have your seat, we're getting started.
Buenas tardes. Buenas tardes. So happy to be in the Bronx this evening. We're going to get started because we want to be known as the commission that starts on time. I'm going to introduce my co-chair, Jim Malatres.
Good evening. Thank you all for joining us. It's a real honor to be here. I think this is our second hearing. We were in Rochester last week and will be all across the state. And we've been tasked by the governor and the legislature to really focus on to make sure we count every resident of New York, which is critical, not just to democracy, but political power and finances of the state. We've heard from many people already, we give back $35 billion more to the federal government than we get back in revenue already. So this could be exacerbated if we don't count every New Yorker. Of course, this problem is not new on counting every resident. George Washington, ironically enough, complained about undercounting in the first census in 1790. Back then, it was about people didn't want to pay taxes. But even then, it was something that our elected officials worried about. But I think what we're dealing here, we're in the shadow of a much bigger problem. And in this year's context, there are serious questions. We just recently learned that the Census Bureau has entered into dating sharing agreements with the Department of Homeland Security and other things. So we are really concerned about the chilling effect that some of the activities of the federal government will have on counting every resident. So that's going to be our focus. We hope to hear from many of you tonight. And we plan to present a really robust report to the legislature and the governor over the course of the next several months. And we're in existence for several years. So we are an outlet for communities all across the state as this proceeds. So I'm just honored to be here and I'd like to turn it back over to our wonderful co-chair and Secretary of State.
Thank you, Jim. I am going to ask my fellow commissioners to introduce themselves. Joe, if we can start with you. And we're going to finish up here with Deputy Borough President, who'll give us welcoming remarks.
Yeah, hi. I'm Joe Salvo. I'm the chief demographer for New York City. I'm at the New York City Department of City Planning.
Byron Brown, Mayor of the City of Buffalo, native New Yorker, grew up in the borough of Queens.
I'm Lauren Moore. I'm the Executive Director of the Pioneer Library System in Canandaigua, New York. I'm also Chair of the New York Library Association's 2020 Census Task Force and a member of the Finger Lakes Digital Inclusion Coalition.
Good evening. Kareem Kamara, I'm Executive Director of the Governor's Office of Faith-Based Community Development Services and Deputy Commissioner in the Agency Homes and Community Renewal. Good to be with you.
Good evening. I'm Alberta Reardon and I am the Commissioner for the New York State Department of Labor.
Andy Beveridge, I'm Professor at Queens College, City University of New York. We have the honor, I don't know how many people hear from Hostos, but we have the honor of having a former president of Hostos, our president, who's on the way to be Chancellor of CUNY. So Hostos must have been doing something right.
And good evening, everyone. My name is Marika Scott McFadden and I am the Deputy Borough President here in the Bronx. And I'm happy to welcome the commission, its co-chairs, Secretary of State Rosanna Vazado and Jim Malatres, and all of you here today. On behalf of the people of my borough, I want to thank you for giving your time as leaders of our state's Complete the Count Commission and doing your part to make sure that the 2020 census delivers for all New Yorkers. Whether Bronxites and New Yorkers know it or not, the census counts for a huge and has a huge effect on what happens to our everyday lives. If New Yorkers are not counted, our quality of life and our access to necessities and services will undoubtedly be diminished. We at the Borough President's Office are working with churches, colleges, nonprofits, and community-based organizations to put together our own Complete the Count Committee. We plan to work with these, those within the community to ensure that trusted voices communicate just how important it is to be counted in this upcoming census. I'm here this evening on behalf of Borough President Ruben Diaz Jr. to present our views on ways to ensure that many New Yorkers, or as many New Yorkers as possible, are accurately counted in the 2020 census. There is no doubt that New York City needs adequate funding in order to help our residents thrive. The accuracy of the census count has a direct impact on the amount of government funding that is allowed to the Bronx and the New York City as a whole. These government funds support a gamut of issues from infrastructure improvements, rehabilitation of public housing, and head start programs, all of which our Bronx and New York City residents profoundly need. Understanding this fact is the first step to understanding how important it is to promote an accurate census count. Historically, our communities have been chronically undercounted and therefore acutely underserved. In the Bronx, we have had a history of having to do more with less for our 1.4 million residents. And based on the last census estimates, approximately 57% of Bronx County's current population, some 818,000 residents, live in hard-to-count neighborhoods. In fact, the Bronx ranks number four on the list of hard-to-count counties of all New York State. By that same metric, almost 30% of Bronx households did not respond by mail to the 2010 census, leaving some of them to be left out of that year's count. Knowing what we know now and how critical it is for our community's well-being to be counted, we cannot stand idly by and let that happen again. The Bronx has seen its overall participation in the census increase considerably, raising from 56% during the 2000 census to 65% in 2010. This improvement was in no small part due to concerted effort and partnership between local officials, community organizations, and the census staff itself. A decade has passed, and we are now facing an even more polarized environment that works to invoke fear and intimidation within vulnerable populations. This fact poses an even more significant threat to hard-to-count communities and increases the likelihood of undercounting. All of this underscores the need for resources from the state that are specifically allocated to community-based organizations to help increase their capacity. This is why the Bronx Borough President is advocating for the inclusion of $40 million in the fiscal year 2020 budget to build additional capacity at community-based organizations in New York City to ensure that all of our residents are counted. Community-based organizations work within our neighborhoods to reach out to vulnerable populations, explaining the purpose of the census, what it means to their community, how it helps our schools, how it affects our representation in Congress, and their districts. With adequate funding, we at least have a fighting chance to target historically hard-to-count communities to make sure that they know that this is their opportunity to be represented, counted, and heard. Conducting an accurate count for the 2020 census will not be a small feat. It requires planning, education, strategic management, and a groundswell of community outreach with partners invested in its mission, a complete count. We believe that the only census that is a successful one is one that sincerely aims to reach each and every person and count each and every household it can. Without full participation in the 2020 census, New York City residents, Bronxites, will not receive the federal resources and political representation they need and deserve. But this can only happen when there is a commitment from the state to provide adequate funding. Thank you for allowing me to welcome you to speak here this evening, and thank you for your consideration for this important matter.
Thank you. Thank you. And before calling on some of our presenters, I want to also thank Hostos for having us and recognize the President of Hostos, David Gomez, who is standing in the back. Thank you for being here. And also to recognize Rich Toby, who is basically our central census person for the state and for all the folks who organized this event tonight. Each speaker will have three minutes, and we have these very handsome timekeepers who work for DOS, very special. So they're over here to my right.
I like the strike from the record, handsome.
They work for me, so I can say that. Let me ask New York City Councilmember Carlos Mencaca to be our first speaker, if you would step up there. I don't know how they, when the time is up, it's the Bronx. I don't know if there's a hook or whatever.
Well, I'm from Brooklyn, so you're going to need a lot.
Councilman, just for the record keepers, I think we have a couple of presentations that can go a little longer than the three minutes. I think we have the pre-planned presentation about 20 minutes, so you have time.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And I think this is all I have, so I think we're going to be fine. Thank you, thank you, Jim.
No, you don't got 20.
No, I won't use 20. Muchas gracias and buenas noches. My name is Carlos Mencaca. I'm New York City Councilmember representing District 38 in the City Council in Brooklyn, southwest Brooklyn. I'm also the Chair of the Immigration Committee. And I'm a member, I'm a co-chair of the Council's Committee on the Census, the Census Task Force. But I chair that with Carlina Rivera, my fellow councilmember from District 2. So I'm here on her behalf and Speaker Corey Johnson's behalf as I talk to you about how important it is to the City Council to join you in this effort. The work that we're doing here in hearings is to really provide the opportunity to tell the story and call to action our people. There's a tremendous amount at stake here in the 2020 census. And the census determines how the federal government allocates more than $700 billion for vital programs like Medicaid, Section 8, SNAP, Title I education grants, and more. Of that $700 billion, let's see, of that $700 billion, $73 billion of that come to the city of New York, the state of New York. In the Bronx alone, in 2018, there were about 462,000 SNAP beneficiaries who combined benefits totaled $805 million. The Bronx had almost over 1 million Medicaid enrollees, over 70% of the borough's population. And right here, in Councilmember Rafael Salamanca Jr.'s district, there are about 34,000 students enrolled in 79 schools that received over $39 million in federal funding in fiscal year 2019. It's a lot of money. It's a lot of support that our community needs. The food, the healthcare, the education that our neighborhoods rely on depend on a full and accurate census count. The census also determines political representation. And the New York state that we believe in is at risk of losing up to two congressional seats. This federal administration is no friend to New York. I don't have to say that to anyone here. But we need a congressional delegation that truly represents the population of our state and everyone that lives in it. New York City faces many challenges in getting a full count. The city has high concentrations on historically hard-to-count populations. You just heard from the Deputy Borough President about those communities here in the Bronx. And these are people of color. These are immigrants. These are renters. 80% of Brooklynites, where I hail from, are more, and more than half of Bronx and Queens residents, live in hard-to-count neighborhoods. The city is home to over 3.1 million immigrants, nearly 40% of the city's population. And the potential inclusion of the citizenship question is an attack. And we've all felt it on our immigrant communities and would likely discourage them. It's already discouraged them from participating. In addition, the census form being online for the first time ever poses a unique challenge as the Bronx and Queens and Brooklyn have less internet access than the statewide average. In light of these challenges, the City Council is committed to ensuring that we get a complete count, 100%. Our Census Task Force will mobilize councilmembers to work closely with community-based organizations to engage traditionally undercounted communities and assist New Yorkers with responding online. We want that to happen. And we heard from Julie Menon, the director, that she's excited about pulling those resources at the city level to give us information so that we can partner. Because we will partner with the mayoral administration, the New York Counts, the New York Counts 2020 Commission here, the Association for a Better New York, and other groups on the ground to ensure that every New Yorker is counted. We can't do this alone, and we need the state's help. So how can the state help? We are joining the call for the $40 million of funding that needs to come directly to CBOs, and that's a very critical thing. This money needs to go directly to community organizations, our CBOs, our trusted CBOs. They know their communities best and are trusted voices in our communities so they can get that message out and bring our community out. In a Quinnipiac poll released in January, 46% of New Yorkers said that they would be more likely to fill out a census form if they heard it was an important thing to participate and buy their local CBO. The CBO engagement rated higher in the poll than any other source of engagement such as social media or local elected official. I hope that's not true with my district, but we're going to go with CBO. We are in competition with other states. There's a fierce competition for this money, for a piece of the federal funding pie. And California has already allocated $100 million in census efforts. We've got to do better. And they know what it's at stake over there in California. And they're serious about delivering good count for California. I think New York is ready for that, too. So New Yorkers have stood up. They've told us on the ground in our districts, you are all here as representatives of your organization and the work that you do. You are New Yorkers. You're standing up. So we're asking the state and the elected officials that represent our voices to say yes to the census, to bring the $40 million in so that we can get directly funded CBO plans out. Let's do this right. Thank you so much for your service.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for Mr. Mencaca?
You don't get off that easily, Councilmember.
Hi. I'm from the library community. I'm wondering if you've been having conversations with the Brooklyn Public Library and what role do you see them playing in this effort?
Well, one of the things that I want to just offer, not just the libraries, but a really big grid of community partners that have systems and are engaging with our local districts, is using the model around participatory budgeting. And I don't know if you've heard about some of the stuff that we're doing here in the city, but over 100,000 people voted last year. These are mostly immigrants and people of color, young people. So, and the libraries are part of that. And so we're really activating warm and connected networks of spaces, public spaces that people come in. Short answer is yes, and we're already doing it, and we're going to keep doing it.
Great. And I have one more question. I know you mentioned that broadband access is lower in your district than in other parts of the state. I know in some parts of the state, it's over 50% of New Yorkers don't have internet access. What's it like for your folks?
It's, and it's not just in Brooklyn. This is across the entire city. And specifically, even I think the Bronx, you can hear very, very particular kind of stories. So we need to come up with a way to bridge that gap. The city has kind of began to create infrastructure with the Link NYC hotspots, but that's not in every neighborhood either. So that's a real gap for the online piece, but our libraries are an example, our schools are an example of other places that have that infrastructure. But that's going to take planning and strategy on the ground. And let's do that. But it's going to take the funding to bring the organizers to make that happen. We're thinking about that, too.
Any questions?
Sure.
Yay, Commissioner.
Hi.
Hi.
Carlos and I go way back. I'm B. Tomisoff. I'm the Commissioner for the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs here in New York City. So I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about maybe some of the ways that you think it would be most effective to engage groups in thinking about communication to some of the populations that have increased fear and concern at this time. You know, the litigation around the citizenship question is ongoing. It's something that we definitively don't have an answer to yet, though are very happy with the initial decisions from the courts striking down the inclusion of it. But I'm wondering, in some of the work that you've done in engaging with community partners, if you have a kind of sense of what has been most effective in sort of talking about the importance of this participation and the confidentiality measures that are included in the census itself, the process itself.
Thank you, Commissioner, for that question. And I think the first thing I want to say is the work that we're doing in the City Council in partnership with your office, the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, I think is a great model. And so what have we done together? One is ethnic media. I think there's a real conversation to be had about how ethnic media get the resources they need to be able to communicate in their languages, from Arabic, Bengali, Spanish, et cetera. And I think they're calling for this, not just for census, but in general. How do we help them? Second, the work that happens on the ground in a town hall-style conversation, this is what CBOs are doing all the time, is to ensure that all those town hall conversations to explain what's actually happening, because people are watching. It can't just be from the news either, from the outlet, is to break it down in their language. And that goes a hard, it goes a long way in building that bridge, but it is one of the most expensive things to do, is to bring translators that understand, they can answer questions. And so if we're dedicated to ensuring that every person, every immigrant that does not speak English at home or have any access, has access through conversations in our neighborhoods. So I think those are the two things that probably won't get discussed often, but I feel like are game changers. If we can bring that expertise and ability for nonprofits to do that in their own languages, that's going to be the game changer.
I have a second question, too. Sort of just interested in seeing, if you've heard, kind of I'm sort of just interested in seeing, if you've heard kind of dissemination to community-based organizations or others around the ability for communities to apply to become census workers, and kind of interested in just helping to spread the word so that the folks who are actually the boots on the ground are reflective of the communities that may be undercounted.
There's a lot of excitement on the ground, and I think what people want are exactly how to get people to apply and then understand that there's a six-month wait, essentially. And I think that's the killer of the immediate nature of any job. So I think it's also, this is how we communicate to people that they need to get in. To get to 20,000 people, we need 100,000 applications. And so there's interest. It's gonna be our job as elected officials to ensure that they get a sense of how they can apply. And if there's any skills gap, that we fill it in. The city and the state should be able to fill in any skills gap that they have as they wait for an affirmative response to being an numerator. And that's something we can do, we have the resources. Let's get SBS on board and really understand what those skills gaps are. That information is gonna come from the CBOs, and that, I think, is gonna be critical. And I'm hoping that we can talk about that in the budget hearings, too.
Great.
About getting the resources for that particular skills gap challenge.
Thank you.
To follow up on the Commissioner's question on the actually employing of people, we heard from the Census Bureau presentation in Rochester that they're having a really difficult time this time around hiring people because of the economic situation being better in many communities. The real issue, of course, is there's gaps in that, and there's plenty of opportunity. We raised SUNY since we were upstate, being a vital resource for communities there. I wonder if you could speak to or help build partnerships with the CUNY system here. There's plenty of students across the city that would, I think, love the opportunity to participate in the democratic process and get a job at $15 to $17 an hour. So I don't know if you can speak to how we can better reach out to those CUNY campuses and communities and make sure that there's opportunities there for students, is my first question.
Brilliant idea. I think we're gonna be relying on and really bringing in the young people in our cities to take this challenge on. This is, and I'm gonna hark back to the participatory budgeting phenomenon that's been alive for the last few years now. And that has really brought out a lot of young people. But this is a paid job. And so I think the CUNY campuses are gonna be a really critical component. I think our high schools and working with our high schools are gonna be a really critical component. And I think what our, and we're the City Council, so we're just one kind of member is really, or one component of all this. Our district offices have relationship with different CUNY campuses that are strong. And I'll just talk about my relationship with, say, the Mexican Studies Institute over at Lehman College. We're already building a relationship with the students that are graduating or who are about to graduate or can actually take on a job during college, ensure that that happens. So it has to happen at a micro level to ensure that every institute, and we have the Puerto Rican Institute, we have the Haitian Institute, offer opportunities for immigrant students. Because we're talking about language here, the language barrier is real, is to get students who understand the communities in our neighborhoods to get hired. And that, that's already there, we just have to stitch it together and activate it. Good point.
One more question. As a council member, we're, you know, we, in Rochester last week, there was some discussion of some local resources being made available, too, with the state. Is the city of New York also gonna put up resources as well?
I'm gonna look over to the Commissioner while I say this. The-
There's no wrong answer, don't look over-
Well, no, there's just the, there's just the truth, nothing but the truth. We have yet to see any allocation from the Mayor's Office, to be honest. And so that's, that's been a little disappointing. But there's an opportunity here, and that's the budget process. And so we are calling for the Mayor to put our own $40 million to match the state's, to ensure that we really bring the level of resources that can go directly to CBOs. And I know Julie Menon is really fighting the good fight, we need to make our voices heard. It would help if the state does their work before April 1st, so that we can take that to the Mayor and say, hey, you know, California did it, New York State did it, and so should we. And those are always difficult conversations to have, but the membership is really united in this, and so I'm hoping for a better, a better, short answer is yes, local resources directly to CBOs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to ask a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, in terms of, you mentioned the financial resources. And so, I don't mean in lieu of, but in addition to the financial resources, what are the human resources in terms of, I know Brooklyn is a strong network of, you know, council members, educational institutions, and advocates, and religious organizations. Are there dialogues now, is there synergy between groups in terms of reaching out to their communities?
There's great synergy, and I think there's a lot of natural groups and networks and coalitions that have been built that are already uniting. The Brooklyn Community Foundation just launched their own kind of borough, and I don't know if it's happened in the Bronx yet, but the foundation itself has put resources with the Borough President's Office, and so I think that's a great model. They're bringing all the organizations together to figure out what they need. And I think the idea is for each of these neighborhoods, each of these organizations, each of these immigrant communities to build their plan and be ready for the funding as we fight, the political fight, to get that ready. And Brooklyn is ready, is getting ready and putting that planning together. And so we're gonna be hearing that through the budget hearings as well. And we're gonna ask organizations to come prepared for that.
Okay. And also, regarding the individuals completing the census online, you mentioned, you know, broadband or lack of access to technology, is that the only reason, are there other reasons, are there barriers to individuals doing?
No, the President, we were at an ABNE presentation, the Quinnipiac Poll, talked about relationship to data, and online is always this weird thing where people don't trust it, for, I think, good reasons. And so we gotta, we gotta talk about that with our communities. And this is where our town hall discussions are, person-to-person rooms, where they hear it in their own language from trusted partners, is gonna hopefully dispel that and show that these are protected links with information that's gonna go and be protected overall. And so it's not just access to broadband, it's not having trust to internet-based information sharing. That's a hard one, that's gonna be hard.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
But not impossible.
Right, I agree.
And I know you know Brooklyn, so let's work on Brooklyn.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you, thank you for your time, and let's get it, let's get 100%. Thank you.
All right. Your next presenter, I'd like to welcome our Westchester County Executive, George Latimer.
Well, good evening, I'm George Latimer, Westchester County Executive. It's a pleasure to be here, and I really want to thank those of you on this committee and the state for making this effort an opportunity. It's unprecedented as we look forward to the 2020 census, and I think we all understand at every level of government just how critical it is that we get this right. I've traveled here just a few miles from Westchester County. Most people see the suburbs and the city as being two very different worlds, but we are in the same world. And we have the exact same concerns that you have here in the five boroughs of New York and all across New York State, to do everything we can to work with the state, work with our municipalities to make sure that we get an accurate count of all of our residents. Westchester County, which, you know, most people think of as being something out of a John Cheever novel, perhaps where Robin Lorra Petrie lived, or Don Draper gets off the train to go to the city in Mad Men, we too have an urban reality. The city of Yonkers is the fourth largest city in New York State. The city of Mount Vernon, where I grew up, is an urban area, every bit as urban as we are here in the Bronx and also in the rest of the five boroughs. And we have the very same concerns that all of our constituents are not gonna be counted if we don't take extra effort to make sure that they are. We've identified in our county the same thing that you've identified elsewhere in the state. There are some hard-to-count categories, people who are renters, children under five, the foreign-born, poorer residents. All of these categories exist in Westchester as they exist in New York City and elsewhere in the state. And I think we all need assurances that the census is not going to be used to seek out those who are undocumented. We need assurances that families will not be ripped apart because they filled out a census. And we have to be able to address that in order to have the kind of relationship with the people that we represent, to make sure that they feel comfortable enough to be counted and to have their voice heard in all of this stuff. We have hard-to-count populations in Westchester County. The size and scope of them do not equal what you would find in any of the major boroughs, the major four boroughs of New York City, but the challenges are exactly the same in trying to identify them. We are now trying to work to find partners in each of the pocket areas that we have, primarily in the urban areas, through religious institutions, through libraries, through community centers and cultural events. We know what's at stake. It is not only the question of finances, because the population of our municipalities, as well as the county overall, will be a basis for the allocation of federal aid, but also political efforts. How much representation that we commonly get in the Congress of the United States will be based on us showing what the accurate count is. And I think there are people in parts of this country that are hoping that New York doesn't fully get counted, that somehow there'll be a further shift of resources and representation away from New York and other states like ours, to southern states. And of course, the resources of both political strength and dollars and cents that follow that. We have put together in Westchester County a Complete Count Census Committee. It's in its early stages of it, we have a diverse group of people, they are tasked by us with coming up with a game plan to reach those hard-to-reach county populations. And in so doing it, we're working with the various local villages, towns, and the small cities of Westchester County. It looks a lot like the neighborhoods of a major borough. So here in the Bronx, as we think of bordering neighborhoods like Woodlawn and Wakefield and Riverdale and Marasania and Throggs Neck and Morris Park, we have them incorporated into towns and villages and cities of 6,000 people and 10,000 people, but we have the exact same challenge to be able to do that. And along with Yonkers and Mount Vernon, Nurishel, White Plains, Peekskill represent urban centers for which we prioritize, some of those communities have also created Complete Count Commissions. And so what we have to do is figure out how to coordinate our efforts so that we can mesh into what the state is directing and not run parallel tunnels, but to have a singular effort. And in that regard, we hope that the counties' efforts with the municipalities will complement what the state is intending to do as part of this effort. We identify in our particular county that we want to try to develop, in essence, a marketing plan. We want to develop a plan by which we will be able to go out and systematically get the information about this out, that to the extent that we can help in the training and the recruitment of those people who will ultimately be census takers, all that's important to deal with the many languages that we have, as we do in also part of the state. Just last week in Westchester County, we adopted a language access program by executive order. And in identifying what the priority languages are, we all knew that Spanish was going to be the number-one language of foreign-born speakers, but we found a host of different ethnicities and languages that represented areas we might not have thought of. So the diversity in our county mirrors the diversity in other places, and so I think this is working side by side. We will put in our fiscal year 2020 budget, which we will adopt before the end of this year, an allocation of resources. We haven't figured out how much that would be yet, and we're gonna look to your leadership and consultation with the local governments as well to figure out what kind of a dollar amount is the right amount and to channel that through our county planning department. So it'll be in our county, our county planning department that will interact with whatever the larger entity is. A county government like ours, as large as we are compared to smaller counties in New York State, it's still a little smaller than Suffolk and Nassau, we don't have the governmental structure that the state does. We don't have a housing department or Department of Environmental Facilities or Department of Labor in delivering county services. So we'll have to figure out what are the right mechanisms that mesh in so that we can reach all of these folks. But we're also very enthusiastic about Representative Eliot Engel's proposal that there be a census office in Westchester. Obviously, there'll be in other high-population areas around the state, but Westchester, we think deserves that as well. And I think the most important message to deliver in my, as I close my prepared comments, is so many times in the press of the day, you see a division between the suburbs and the city. There are obvious differences between the city and the suburbs, and the demographics and the wealth and what have you. But there are so many issues in which the suburbs of New York City and the city of New York have a combined joint interest. And what we intend to do in Westchester is to work alongside our brothers and sisters in the city of New York, to find that common ground to be helpful, because together, we will do something that will benefit, we think, New York's place in the picture. We look forward to your leadership, we hope to show at our level leadership and also partnership. And if we can do this right, we have never tried something on this level in any past census, but we hope to have a positive impact and that we will contribute to the overall complete count of the state of New York. So with that, again, I appreciate you letting me share a few thoughts. Mr. Chairman, if there are any questions you'd like me to try to address, Madam Chair, I'm happy to do it. It's always nice to see friends of mine from other parts of my life. Mr. Kamara and I had the pleasure of serving together in the State Assembly. Andy Beveridge and I have talked about redistricting issues going back well over 20 years, and of course, Commissioner Rosado finds her home right alongside the rest of us, a little north of here. So Dr. Malopras has been a great friend to us and a great consultant, so we appreciate being in a room with friends to work together.
Good to see you, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for County Executive? I know you have a question.
I'll ask a question, that's okay. You noted a shared interest in working with the city. I'm wondering, kind of, what are some of the ways that you think would be most beneficial?
Well, for example, if there is an ethnic group that has a certain size and scope in the city, for which there is a presence in Westchester but it's relatively small, we may not have people fluent in the language or culturally adept at being able to reach that constituency. We may think of it as just a very small part of Westchester, but if there's a strategy by which of the Bronx or Manhattan or Queens that constituency is being identified, we want to be able to be helpful as well. And so what we may find is that people who have the ability to connect properly will be coming out of the city, but they will be found in Nurishel helping us get that count of that pocket of people, of that ethnicity in our community. And however we determine the amount of money that we can put aside for this, we're certainly prepared to pay proportionally into joint public information. So when I go home at night, when I turn on local television, I'm watching the same television station as you are. And so if there's an effort being made to try to reach people by mass media, radio, targeted radio into certain constituencies, then we can be a part of what that process would be, because our residents listen to the same public media that you do here in the city.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me add, at the Department of City Planning, we have a, you probably know this, a regional division. The aim of that division is to indeed reach out to our counties surrounding the city. I know there is a plan that's being put in place to reach out and exchange ideas on outreach. I know Julie Menon Schop is gonna be looking at this, I think, with an eye for some sort of a meeting maybe by June where we exchange ideas, you know, and try to come up with the best solutions for, as you mentioned, the populations that we have in common. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of it.
That's very encouraging, and our Commissioner of Planning, Norma Drummond, and whatever assigned staff that she have, would be happy to participate in those meetings, you know, since, you know, you're the big apple, you're, you know, one of the little apples around you. You'll set time and place, we'll be there. I think, I think we think of ourselves as the golden apple, there's some logic there that was done once. But whatever those events are, we will happily participate in them, and hopefully we can contribute to whatever those efforts would be.
I'll ask a question. I know you mentioned one of your concerns is the lack of trust by some people in this process, and that now community-based organizations and institutions are now being asked to loan our credibility to help gain trust in this process. Have you and your partners thought a little bit about what that looks like on their end? I know I've been talking with my colleagues, and perhaps if we can find some kind of standards for the point of data entry, then at least we can guarantee some security and some standards at that end. Have you been talking about that and what resources you might need to do that?
Well, we have, and it comes in different categories. Certainly, any of the religious institutions or the neighborhood institutions that deal with immigrants are very much worried about the question about documented status, which we think should not be on the, you know, in the census. And we're worried about what happens if it remains on the census and how that will affect our ability to outreach. As we work through some of the community organizations, the only difference is the size and scope, where, you know, in the city it might be this many people, in Westchester it'd be these many people, but the same type of thing to overcome. And we know we've got a mountain to overcome, you know, that one of the classic lines that everybody rolls their eyes at is, I'm here from the government and I'm here to help you. And, you know, quite many people see the government as an institution that is not there to help, but to track somebody down, to try to imply perhaps some, you know, police function. And then, of course, because part of the undercounted population are those that are immigrants here in this country, the lack of faith that even if there's goodwill on the part of a county government, how do we deal with the fact that the federal government with, you know, their officials could come in and override and use information that we gather for- know, their officials could come in and override and use information that we gather for proper reasons, and turn it into an improper allocation? We've put in effect, within our authority as a county government, an Protection Act, but we recognize it goes so far but no further, because of the limits of what a county government has the authority to do. So we're struggling with that right now. And also, the part of the undercounted population that might not be immigrants, but people of color, who frankly, you know, look to a government that hasn't served their needs. And, you know, what is it about this that's going to be so much better, you know, in that situation? I think we have to figure out how to address those issues, or we won't get the cooperation that we need.
We've been joined by Commissioner Esmeralda Simmons, so she's here. One more question for you, County Executive. The internet, or internet access, or the lack thereof, both not only as just an actual hookup problem, but a cultural barrier, has been raised across the state wherever we've gone. Do you have similar issues in Westchester? What are some of the ways that we can be helpful to break down some of those barriers?
We do have those concerns. Part of the concerns is a question of resources, that in some cases, those who are the poorest among us don't have easy access to the internet in the same way that those who are more wealthy do. We do have physical parts of Westchester, and this will be more of a problem the further north you go, where internet connection is not a reliable source because of the interconnective issues that exist. In the northern parts of our county, as you well know, Doctor, we have what begins to look like the beginnings of true upstate New York. And I know all my friends who live here think they're going upstate when they go to Larchmont.
That's a different commission and a different debate. Yes, where is upstate?
But when we do get to the northern parts of Westchester, that part of the Hudson Valley, we do actually have some physical concerns about the connectivity and how we reach people. And to some degree, that could be an element of rural undercount, although that's going to be much more of a problem when you go much further north in the state. So we do have those issues. You know, this is all new turf for us, as it is, I guess, for all of us. We have never tried to do this before as a county government, so we're feeling our way through, and we have identified that as a concern. And how we overcome that, again, I think goes back to the local institutions of the community. Just as, you know, a young boy that doesn't have access to a laptop and can access the computer, they go to the library to do those things. And so we're going to have to use institutions like libraries, the school system, and so forth, if we want to try to make that connectivity happen. I'm not sure we really know just how much of a problem this is going to be, but that's why we're all starting now, and not waiting for this to, you know, mature.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming to the Bronx.
Thank you very much. It was nice to be here, and hopefully we'll work together days to come. Much appreciated. Very good to see my friends of long standing. Thank you.
Our next presenter is Amy Torres, and Mr. Kadim Niang.
My name is Kadim Niang, and I represent African Communities Together as the civic organizer. African Communities Together is an organization of African immigrants fighting for civil rights, opportunity, and a better life for our families here in the U.S. and worldwide. African Communities Together empowers African immigrants to integrate socially, get ahead economically, and engage civically. We connect African immigrants to critical services, help Africans develop as leaders, and organize our communities on issues that matter, like the Census 2020. We are also a proud member of New York Council 2020.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Amy Torres. I'm the Director of Policy and Advocacy at the Chinese American Planning Council, representing both CPC Today and New York Council 2020. And Kadim and I are here to talk a little bit about the statewide coalition, New York Council 2020. I also want to recognize some of our colleagues and partners in the room. So if you, as an individual or as an organization, are affiliated with New York Council 2020, would you please raise your hand if you're able? Thank you. And so I do that to point out that these individuals that are testifying today can also illustrate the value that they bring to the coalition, but also the coalition's coordination, not just here in New York City, but across the state. So CPC, the Chinese American Planning Council, we're a community-based organization. We were founded in 1965, in response to the end of the Chinese exclusion years, the Civil Rights Era, Voting Reform Act. And the reason that we joined New York Council 2020, we, you know, from cradle to grave, we serve 60,000 New Yorkers every year. And when we look at the Bureau's own factors that they consider hard-to-count communities, we know that Asian-American Pacific Islanders, the fastest-growing racial group in the state, face myriad and intersectional barriers toward filling out the census accurately, or being deterred from filling out the census to begin with, whether it's limited English proficiency, whether that they are renters, whether that they are recent arrivals to the country, and their familiarity with previous census cycles is low. So in the spring of last year, 2018, New York Council 2020 formed. It was a statewide coalition. In its beginning, there was a conference here in New York City to invite community-based organizations, members across the state that are working with the public and concerned for their own membership and their own communities, the very same things that CPC was thinking about. In that time, we've grown to include over 160 organizations statewide, comprising labor groups, legal groups, social services groups, faith-based institutions. There's a whole host. Actually, I'm forgetting that I have slides about who our membership is. So in that time since last year, we've really formed a huge network of people who are established in the communities, that have representation and reputation within the communities across the state. And we have since then formed seven different working committees across the state. So when we talk about shared interests, both here in New York City and in other parts of the state, we have organizing committees, outreach committees, training and translation, data, tech committees, that all both bring concern directly from the New Yorkers that we interact with every day, and turn those into materials that we can use to organize and encourage a complete and accurate count. I want to let Kadim talk about African communities.
So we joined the New York Council 2020 because African communities in New York are hard-to-reach communities. And let alone, our request of $40 million will be used to outreach and actually train members of my community, which scatter around across New York State. Mostly, now, there's been misconceptions in the community, especially about the citizenship one. And that has actually caused a lot of people to feel like they're frightened, and they feel that by filling out the census, it will reveal their immigration status. And so part of our goal is to go out to the community and basically, you know, say, "This is not going to affect your immigration status at all." And this is important, because, you know, you need hospitals, you need schools, you need all these things that are important to the community. And so what we need, part of that allocation of $40 million will be used to also target, because not everyone speaks English. In the Bronx alone, there are 11,218 African languages spoken at home. And so if you look at the other parts of the Bronx, that's, you know, a large number. And so we want to provide services for people from our community, train them, people who speak the languages, people who are targeting, and be able to say, "Hey, you should fill out the Census 2020. Why is it important to you? Because your children need better schooling." So we will focus a lot on organizing communications and technical assistance and language and translation, and these include, you know, going to the local mosque, the local churches, and the local community organizations, focusing on specific African immigrant groups around New York City and New York State.
So the strategy of our coalition is both to, you know, network with community-based organizations that are doing similar work, organizations across the state, and really build the capacity to uplift messaging that empowers people to understand and engage in the census, but also feel empowered to fill it out, and understand ways that they can safely do so. So our coalition has taken a few different initiatives. In our timeline of strategy, the focus that we have right now is really making sure that in the state's overall budget allocation for the census, that $40 million does go directly to community-based organizations. So we heard in prior testimony that California has already designated over $90 million. And while things like town halls, media briefings, advertising campaigns are going to be critical for putting information out, our position as a coalition is that it's really community-based organizations that are going to reach the hardest-to-count communities. It's going to be our colleagues who serve senior lunches and are reminding seniors in their own language, "Hey, you know, do you have questions about the census? This is how you fill it out." It's in our ESOL classes that we have extra hours for instructors to be able to meet students after class and assist them in filling out the census on their own. And when we talk about the broadband access, you know, the City Zone Comptroller put out a report just a couple of years ago on internet inequality in the city, which is a very real and pressing issue, but also the issue of digital literacy, and the digital divide is very pressing for our community. So it's not just going to be broadband access and hotspots across the city, it's going to be someone walking through, step by step, how to fill out the census, making sure that people are filling it out safely and comfortably.
And not everyone has access to computers, too, you know. I always get phone calls from my aunt, "How do I send out my email?" And this is like six times she's asked me, and it's like, some people just are not technologically savvy, right? And so we want to be able to provide instances where, you know, even though it might be online, you'll have in the language of the person who's filling it out, or have someone there to translate it for them, so they can be able to fill it out online if it starts to come back. For the state budget advocacy, last Tuesday, March 5th, last Tuesday, March 5th, we joined New York Council 2020 and a bunch of other organizers, including the New York Immigration Coalition. And we took about 10 of our organizational members to go to the state capitol. And we actually, you know, we were allowed, we, you know, said we needed this. And it was nice to see people who were, you know, who didn't think that their voice mattered, because, you know, they said, "Well, we're immigrants, and the president doesn't really care about us." But, you know, to just show them that there is a coalition out there that is focusing on, you know, putting importance on the census itself, was very moving. And people felt a sense of, you know, "Okay, well, I guess now I can fill it out." So they got a sense of understanding, and kind of all the misconceptions and all of that, because people have been passing out WhatsApp messages, like saying, "People are getting, if you fill out the census, you're going to get deported." And we're just kind of, you know, squashing all these misconceptions. And, you know, through the advocacy and outreach that we do, we achieve many of these ambitions.
So to end, you know, I just want to, when we look at the strategy and the ability of our coalition to really empower folks on the ground who have the relationships with these communities, if we get to a point where money is not put in the budget for community-based organizations, the longest part of our strategy, which is really growing membership, and then training individuals to do train-the-trainer models and mobilization in their communities, that entire part of our coalition's work is going to be crippled, if not impossible. So we'd love to open up for questions from the Commission. And then I also want to recognize that a number of our colleagues are going to be talking further in detail in their own testimony.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know you're stressing funds directly to community-based organizations, which seems like the mechanism for delivering those funds would be in the state budget, which we expect right within the month. Are you hearing from legislators that there are funds that will be allocated? I know the governor's budget has $0 in it.
So we're hearing from, and, you know, we would love to hear ways that you're uplifting this message, also in your conversations, but we're hearing from the Assembly that they want this in there, they understand the value. We're hearing that the Senate is sort of figuring out with, you know, all the changes, what they're going to include. But our real worry is that we're already really late stage in the game. So when we talked about hiring for census jobs, you know, who already does youth leadership? Who already does after-school programming? Who already does job placement and workforce development? Community-based organizations. What if we were the ones helping and having the resources to place people into those census jobs? But really, by hamstringing the process, by further delaying it, so, yeah, essentially that's what we're hearing, is that parts of it are there, but that there's also talk about putting it in the Regional Economic Development Councils, which would further delay whether or not this goes to community-based organizations.
One other question, too. So I know some, one of the concerns, you know, about the data security, and we've been assured by the Census Bureau that that data is protected on the server, and that we're safe on that end. But the point of data entry, my understanding, is one of, one point of vulnerability. So I'm wondering how prepared community-based organizations are with technology, and would you, or would you require funding in order to get the kind of technology, information security, data security processes and infrastructure in place to do the work that you need to do?
Yeah, we need it all, honestly. It's necessary, just to kind of put the resources out there, to walk people through it, and to actually have people who are trained to walk people through it. That requires funding. So, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, so fortunately, one of the committees that we're working with is looking through, you know, at least here in the city, a lot of us, through city agencies, may have laptops that have been given by, you know, whether it's DYCD or DIFTA. But it's really a matter of making sure that our tech teams are informed, and that we're all working coordinated together. That's not going to, I mean, anyone who's called their IT department knows that they're, like, swamped. But really, if we're able to give them the resources to work in coordination, it's going to take support.
I don't have to tell you, we're just a few blocks from one of the largest new African immigrant communities in the country. Could you tell us a little bit about the messages that you think, putting aside all of the generalizations that are made about the importance of the census, can you tell us what message you think would most resonate with your community?
I think the message would be, like, "You count, and you should not be limited by threats from the president, or threats from, you know, members of Congress who are, you know, trying to send people back to their countries, the ending of, you know, DACA, TPS, especially for, like, people who are in librarian DED." What happens is people are mostly of fear about their immigration status before the census. And we're trying to say, "Well, immigration status is very important, but so is the census, too, because that allows you to, you know, have access to schools for your kids." And part of that is reaching out into the ethnic radio stations, and having people from that community talk to the community. That's what, that's what the important is about. Because, like, someone who speaks my language and looks like me, I trust more, honestly, than someone knocking on my door and telling me to fill out a random, you know, census. So putting it out there that, you know, "This is important for you, and that you are not under threat, you're not going to get deported because you don't have appropriate immigration papers." I think that's where the, where the important messages.
Thank you.
Any Commissioners on this side, questions? Oh, I have a question. Thank you so much for coming. Hello again. Can you tell us exactly which languages African immigrants need to hear to get the message?
So there's a lot of languages spoken, right? And so the lucky thing is, I mean, yes, colonialism sucks, but speaking of countries that has almost 500 languages, you know, where English or French is spoken, especially with French-speaking African countries, if you can't get them specifically on the language, you can always get them on French. But New York mostly has people from West African countries. So you want to target French speakers, and also people coming from Nigeria. So you're looking at Mali, Senegal, Nigeria, Guinea, most concentrated in West African languages and French.
Well, I'm asking you to specifically tell us the names of the languages.
Okay, so Yoruba, Wolof, Fulani, Songenke. Mandingo has about seven dialects, so you've got to be careful with that, depending on someone you're speaking to. Those are the main languages spoken in New York City. And then you have Arabic, people coming in from, like, North Africa, or Mauritania, or Sudan. And I could go on for days. There's a lot of languages.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, in the Bronx, there's 11,000 spoken in the houses here. So you can just imagine the number of languages that are, you know, spoken in New York City.
Thank you.
I have a question. You talked about kind of using ESOL classes potentially as a space, and I think that's really interesting. I'm wondering if you can elaborate a little bit more on maybe some of that thinking? Yeah, so I think when we think about the value that community-based, the community-based strategy brings, is that it's not the traditional town hall, information session, panel forum, it's really the people that we know the hardest to reach in our community are interacting with every day. So the ESOL model, like many other models- So the ESOL model, like many other models, whether it's an after-school daycare program or whether it's, you know, one of our senior centers, we want to make sure that our staff that are interacting most closely with the community day to day, that have the most established trust, that they are the ones messaging about the census. But we know as, you know, providers of state services, whether it's through city or state contracts, that largely that formula for staffing comes down to an hour by hour rate. And if we're not providing our staff with the additional hours to really have those in-depth conversations, it's going to be, it's going to be difficult to have a substantive, convincing conversation about why the census is so necessary to fill out. And this, you know, it's worth mentioning that this approach is not radically new. This is indeed why New York State contracts so many of its human services to community-based providers, because the state acknowledges that all of these issues of language, culture, you know, reputation and relationship with the communities, this is the very reason why we're contracted to do all of the things that we do. Census is just another part of it.
We have one more question, which I'll ask, and then we'll turn it over to Attorney General James. You mentioned social media being a way of getting at hard-to-reach communities, and you mentioned WhatsApp. I don't understand what WhatsApp is. Are there, are there, I'm the youngest, I'm the youngest one here too. But is there, but maybe that's just me. What are some sources of, what are specific, I think that Esmeralda's point, what are specific types of social media, technology platforms and things that we could recommend that we may not naturally think of, like Twitter and other things, but places where immigrant populations may go that we should focus on as a way of getting the word out?
Yeah, just a quick question for the woman from the Chinese community. What about WeChat?
Sure. So if you ever decide to travel out the country and you want to call your family over the internet for free, download WhatsApp so you don't get charged by your, it's an app that you download. You can actually call people through the internet on it. And what on WhatsApp is there are groups where people can actually join? My mother's part of like seven of them, whether it's like African Women's Association to, you know, people coming from a specific place in Senegal, where I'm from. And so basically what happens is, I remember one time she was showing me, oh, I got this message in WhatsApp group that was shared amongst maybe like 150 people who are in this group about someone who was deported on site at JFK Airport. And so the thing was, don't fly with Delta Airlines, they'll basically screw you over. And that was like a misconception that was going on. So what happens is at many times, people share this information and we constantly have to go and be like, this is not true, and kind of go into those. So that's what, that's the WhatsApp. And so way to talk about that is to look at specific African organizations. And each organization will tell you that they have a WhatsApp group. We have one with our members. It's just easy to just connect. It's like Facebook, but you can send messages and things like that. And there's also the radio stations, many of them who are like in the Bronx, in Harlem, Brooklyn. And it's, it would be great to send like, you know, someone from our community to do a presentation where, you know, you have taxi drivers who are driving 24 hours, you have people who listen to these radios to know about what's happening back home, but it's also good to know about what's happening in this home and what, you know, how this is important to us also.
Can you please provide us with the, with the tags for the radio stations?
Yeah, so one of the radio stations that I know, there's, so there's about in every, even within each community, there's like 20, 20 different radio stations. The one I know that's famous that actually rents out some time to many African organizations or just groups and is WPAT 9:30 AM. And there's also other ones that I could send you to. There's some that are online. There's people now, actually, Facebook Live is being used a lot in the community, you know. So, you know, before it was just WhatsApp, but now my mother has Facebook and like Instagram, so I think we're getting up there.
Can your mother help us in this census?
Sure.
If we get community-based funding.
Right.
I do want to talk about WeChat for a little bit and how the Chinese-American and the larger Asian-American diaspora community interacts with social media. So we know that because of political regimes in China, there's actually quite a bit of online censorship. So some of the largest internet companies in the world are actually Chinese internet companies purely by the nature of China's population and size and their user base. So it's impossible to log onto Gmail, it's impossible to log onto Facebook, Twitter, Instagram in mainland China, but there are mirror platforms that do the exact same thing. So WeChat is a big one, Sina Weibo, which is like Twitter. There's a whole host of different social media platforms that when someone is a new immigrant and is coming here, it's very difficult to adapt to things like Facebook or Twitter when you have no friends on it. But when you want to maintain a connection with home, you're using these platforms that are in your language, that are connecting you with your friends and family at home. And you're also going to have more trust in news that you receive on those platforms than you do, you know, in your five friend network on, I don't think Google Plus is a thing, but Facebook. And so CPC felt this very acutely when public charge happened because we were doing a lot of rapid response through traditional print and online, online being like online news media, but we had actually overlooked doing it on social media. And we were receiving calls from individuals in the community saying, how can I trust what CPC is saying about public charge? You're a community-based organization that receives government funding. I saw this on WeChat and that's what I believe. And so, you know, the benefit with census is we have a head start to start that messaging. We're not going to be caught off guard, but we really can't overlook that all communities across New York have different social and online habits. And if we're not really entrusting community-based organizations to engage communities on those platforms, we're, we're really missing so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome New York State Attorney General Letitia James.
Thank you. Let me echo the sentiments of the individuals who just spoke. It's really critically important that we engage community-based organizations and we provide them with the resources to get the word out because at this point in time, given what's happening in our country, it's unfortunate that most individuals, most immigrants are fearful of government, even though that should not be the case. So good evening, everyone. My name is Letitia James and it was the Bronx that elected me the Attorney General for the state of New York. I want to thank the Chairs, Rosado and Malatras, but I also wanted to recognize the other distinguished members of this panel, Commission members, including the Mayor of Buffalo, who's on Facebook right now.
He's trying out the social media component.
He is, he is. And I think he's going to pass it down to you, sir. Of course, one of the, my favorite men of the church, one of my favorite ministers, Reverend Kamara, thank you for all that you do. My favorite Commissioner, Commissioner Riordan, thank you for all that you do. Secretary of State, thank you. Doctor Beveridge, and of course, Brooklyn, Dr. Esmeralda Simmons. And may I say hello to the Bronx Board President for me as well, giving my regards and to all of you. Thank you so much for having me here. A fair and accurate count of all of our people in America is one of the federal government's most solemn constitutional obligations. The stakes are enormous, billions of dollars in federal funding for school and housing and transit and healthcare and social and human services are at risk and they're on the line. And so too are the means of representative democracy, congressional seats and apportionment of the Electoral College. The federal government's obligations are also crystal clear. To undertake, to under the Constitution, the Census Bureau must do its best to determine the whole number of persons in each state, not citizens, not persons, but every person, every person. And minority and immigrant populations have historically been some of the hardest groups to count accurately in the decennial census due to issues such as language barriers, distrust of government, which is real, and unequal access to the internet. And for example, the 2010 census, and my friends know it well, they failed to count more than 1.5 million minorities. Any measure that would further dissuade minority participation in the census count is tantamount to governmental malpractice. And this administration, their reckless decision to suddenly abandon long-established practice by demanding to know the citizenship status of every person in this country cuts to the heart and to the soul of this sacred obligation and will create an environment of fear and distrust in immigrant communities that already exist and basically would make it impossible to produce an accurate census and distribute federal resources fairly, which we are all entitled to. And having spent the last two years waging a campaign of fear and purposely pursuing policies that inflict maximal pain on immigrant communities, marginalized communities, communities that have been locked out for far too long, it is hard to argue that this administration deserves the benefit of the doubt. I wanted to give them the benefit of the doubt. But each and every day, as when I walk into the Office of Attorney General, there's a new rollback and a new effort that we've got to file to stand up for the rights of all New Yorkers. And this is true in this administration's, their own research has indicated that adding a citizenship question, this is not Letitia James, it's from the administration, their own research shows that adding a citizenship question will inevitably jeopardize the overall accuracy of the census by significantly deterring participation in immigrant communities. Their own words. And yes, my friends, we will use their own words in our litigation to remove this question from the form. Even the most forgiving reading of the Constitution's requirements surely prohibits the Census Bureau from deliberately taking steps that this administration knows will cause an incomplete and inaccurate count. Yet this is exactly what this administration is doing and it will have devastating impacts on New York. And it's my argument that what we are doing is doing, is basically transferring power from urban centers like New York City to rural centers and giving them more power. And this move will directly target states like New York that have large, thriving immigrant populations that we welcome and threatening billions of dollars in federal funding for New York State as well as fair representation in Congress and the Electoral College. The resulting undercount will not only fatally undermine the accuracy of the 2020 census, but will deprive historically marginalized immigrant communities in our state of critical public and private resources over the next 10 years. And that's why we are leading a multi-state lawsuit along with a coalition of 34 states.
That's right.
And the United States Conference of Mayors and other advocacy groups to protect New Yorkers and to preserve a fair and accurate census and to hold the Trump administration accountable for violating the Administrative Procedure Act. And I invite all of you to join me in Washington as we argue this case before the United States Supreme Court. So I urge you to start ordering buses. We're all going to Washington before the United States Supreme Court in April to hear the argument. In January, that effort achieved a critically important victory when the judge of the Southern District of New York found that Commerce Secretary Wilbur Ross violated federal law by adding the citizenship question without sufficient, in fact, without any evidentiary support, in fact, using as a canard the Voting Rights Act. Can you believe it? Judge Furman also held that Secretary Ross misled the public and his own department about the reasons for adding the citizenship question. And last month, the Supreme Court agreed to hear the Trump administration's appeal. And oral arguments, like I said, are scheduled for April. In fact, the date is April 23rd. When are we going to Washington?
April 23rd.
And we are confident in the merits of our case. And we look forward to seeing the Trump administration in court once again. The state, our local governments and civil society have a critical role to play in making sure all New Yorkers are counted and counted accurately. These efforts will be even more important for the 2020 census because the census is underfunded and we need more resources and because we need to hire more enumerators and conduct outreach. And the citizenship question creates higher levels of anxiety in immigrant communities and communities of color. It's going to take a cross-the-board effort and I know we need to invest in community-based organizations to get this done, to make sure New Yorkers are counted fairly so we can get the resources and representation that we need. And that is why this commission's work is so important and why it is so critical to hear from all of the stakeholders who will be necessary in parts of this profound undertaking. I will do my part. I would urge everyone in this room to do their part and all residents across the New York State. And we also need partners in the media to get the word out and to let everyone know how important this is to all of us. We're all in this together because everything is at stake. I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When you go to the Supreme Court, what's it?
Pray for us.
Thank you.
We need proof.
Our next presenter, Teri Ann Lowenthal, former Director of the House Census Oversight Committee, Subcommittee.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Secretary Rosado, co-chairman Malatras and distinguished Commission members, some of whom I know, and of course, New York residents. My name is Teri Ann Lowenthal. I grew up in and now live in the equally great state of Connecticut. And as a member of Connecticut's 2020 Census Complete Count Committee, I appreciate the importance of the work you are doing and the effort and investment that you have to make to help ensure an accurate count of New Yorkers next year. So if you'll indulge me for about 60 seconds, I feel like I have to establish my New York bona fides. I was born in Portchester, up the road. Mayor Brown, I'm told, I spent the first four months of my life right outside of Buffalo. My dad worked for Mobil Oil Corporation at the time. My paternal great-grandparents and my grandmother lived up the street on the Grand Concourse in the Roosevelt and later moved to Gerard Street and Grand Concourse. And I attended many services, synagogue services with them at Temple Adath Israel as I was growing up, just again, up the street. I also, I guess the county commissioner left, but I spent a lot of happy days in Westchester County, visiting both paternal and maternal grandparents who were from there. I am one of 17 members of an extended Cornell family. I also lived in Ithaca a couple of years ago myself. My daughter and son-in-law live in Manhattan, as do many other family members. More importantly, I was a member of the 1990 New York Census, New York City's Complete Count Committee, appointed by Mayor Ed Koch. Joe Silva is laughing. And finally, in my continuing quest to help New York State save one of those congressional districts you are projected to lose, I am thrilled to announce that I will be a first-time abuela in July and my granddaughter will be counted in New York. So there you go. One more, one more baby, one more baby to add to the count. All right. So time to get down to business. I do hope my experience with census policy and operational issues, which I've been asked to address today, will help you achieve the goal that all states and communities share, and that's a fair and accurate enumeration of their residents. I'm sure you've seen my full biography, so I won't go into that. I was staff director in the late 1980s and into the mid 1990s of the U.S. House of Representatives Subcommittee that oversaw the Census Bureau and the federal statistical system generally. And since I left Congress in the mid 90s, I have been a consultant to a very wide range of census stakeholders, the business sector, civil rights community, state and local government officials, the mayors, advocates for children, veterans, older Americans, affordable housing, and pretty much everyone in between. I do want to mention, I'm not going to address this today because I wasn't asked, but I haven't heard anybody talk about philanthropy today. And I also advise philanthropy nationally as well as locally and statewide across the country about investing in census outreach. So happy to talk about that maybe during question and answer quickly. And finally, I was a member of President Obama's transition team with responsibility at the time for the U.S. Census Bureau. Remember, that was 2009, going into the last census. So I look forward to answering any questions you have later. I'm going to focus my brief remarks on a high-level overview of the policy challenges that we're facing for the 2020 census. I think the Census Bureau has worked hard this decade to meet a congressional directive, which in hindsight, in my opinion, was unrealistic. And that was to spend no more on the 2020 census than it did on the 2010 census. But despite the Census Bureau's effort, I am deeply concerned about the Census Bureau's abo... ability to pull off a successful census, and that is a census that counts all communities equally well. I see a confluence of unprecedented factors, most of them outside of the Census Bureau's control, that threaten to create a perfect storm in 2020. So let me just quickly go through those, and that's what I'm going to focus on. So first, there has been insufficient, uncertain, and delayed, late annual funding throughout this 10-year census cycle for census research, testing, planning, and preparations. That caused the Census Bureau to have to cut back on a lot of essential research and testing. They canceled important tests, including all planned tests in rural areas. And the risk of unanticipated failure goes up when parts of the census design aren't fully tested and vetted. Now, the final 2019 appropriations bill, federal appropriations bill that was signed into law just a few weeks ago, had some good news. So thanks to relentless advocacy from census stakeholders, including many New Yorkers, and with support from key congressional allies in the Leadership and Appropriations Committee, we should call out House Appropriations Committee Chairwoman Nita Loey, the Commerce Subcommittee Appropriations Chairman Jose Serrano from the Bronx, and of course, Senate Minority Leader Chuck Schumer. They were helpful in getting about $4 billion for the Census Bureau to spend this year on final preparations for the 2020 census. That was about $1 billion more than the president had requested. So I do want you to know that. And of particular note, again, at the urging of stakeholders, appropriators directed the Census Bureau to spend more of that extra money on expanded partnership program staff, get them onboard sooner and get them out in the field, expanded targeted communications, including in-language, more in-language, and plan to establish questionnaire assistance centers, which were not in the original plan. The Census Bureau is now developing that plan for those questionnaire assistance centers, which could be located in places like libraries, for example, but also many CBOs. And national advocates are drafting some guidelines that they will share within a few days with the Census Bureau that we hope the Census Bureau will consider. By the way, faith-based institutions are also good places to put a questionnaire assistance center that will have some sworn Census Bureau employees. That's really important. Now, finally, on the budget issue. Today, as you know, the president's, what we call the skinny budget, was released, meaning it has almost no detail. We only have high-level funding requests for each agency. We have to wait about a week to see detailed line items. Here's what we know so far. The president requested $7.2 billion for the entire Census Bureau. That is far below the $8 billion I estimate that the Census Bureau will need for the 2020 census alone. And by the way, the Census Bureau does a lot more than take the census, right? They do ongoing surveys, day in and day out, really other important programs. And so all I can say about the president's request is it's inexplicable. I can answer questions later if you want about how I came up with my estimate of $8 billion, but I will tell you that I'm partly responsible for giving all the stakeholders marching orders about how much I think the Census Bureau needs. Go forth with a smile and your head up and say, "We need $1 billion more than the president requested." And it can happen. So I'll stop there. Number two, in terms of the perfect storm. This will be the first high-tech census. And let me just modify something I've heard all evening. This is not a digital census. It's a high-tech census. But there will be other ways to respond, and I want you to keep in mind that every household also will have an opportunity to respond by telephone if they want or using a paper form. So you do need to, you know, to let people know about that. Now, no one disputes the importance of modernizing the census and encouraging online response, but technology also brings cybersecurity risks, both real. We have phishing scams, hacking, fake websites, Russia, we hope you're not listening, and perceived risks, right? So people have already talked about that many people are increasingly reluctant to enter their personal information online. And regrettably, there's going to be disruptive disinformation campaigns. They're already percolating on the dark web. We're already seeing them. There was discussion about WeChat. We already know on WeChat, there's a lot of disinformation already coming out of China. So the only thing I can say about that is it's going to be important for CBO voices to drown out the disinformation. All right. Equally concerning, of course, is the digital divide, especially affecting rural areas. Others have talked about that, so I won't go into that. But again, you want to make sure that people do know there's other ways to respond besides going online. So third, and no surprise to the commission, it's already been discussed, is a climate of fear in many communities that could depress participation. I think the anti-immigrant rhetoric and visible federal enforcement activities have driven millions of people into the shadows already, even those who are in the country legally, because many of them live in mixed-status households. And we have an administration that's talking about, you know, the public charge efforts and things that frighten even those, you know, immigrants who are naturalized and here legally. Yes, the strictest confidentiality laws on the federal books protect personal census responses. That information cannot be shared with any other government agency, any court of law, any private entity. It cannot be used against anyone in any legal proceeding, administrative proceeding for any purpose. But people don't trust this administration to, they don't trust this administration's intentions, and they are skeptical that their responses can't be used to harm them or their families. Let me just mention one other thing quickly about the climate of fear, because beyond immigrant communities, I haven't heard it mentioned tonight, I'm worried about areas hit hard by the opioid and heroin crisis, crises. I know that's an issue in New York because there's a higher level of civic disengagement, and people are afraid of local law enforcement authorities. I think neighborhoods where relationships with local law enforcement are strained will also be difficult to engage, and so it'll be particularly important to have trusted messengers in those communities, you know, trying to bridge that gap. I think you have to educate police departments about basic census operations, you know, lest they respond inappropriately to residential calls about strangers enumerating while black, right? You've got to educate police departments, you know, about what's going to happen during the census. Fourth, and very quickly, because a lot of people have talked about, and I can't see anything better than the Attorney General, is the effects of adding an untested. And we have learned through the ongoing litigation, unnecessary citizenship question at the 11th hour. As you know, there's seven lawsuits pending. I'd be happy to answer any other questions. Full disclosure, I testified as an expert witness in the two lawsuits combined in Maryland Federal District Court. What concerns me now, though, is the cloud of uncertainty that's hanging over these final census preparations. So the Supreme Court will presumably weigh in by this summer, but I think Congress, and I'm a, you know, a creature of Congress, should exercise its constitutional responsibility that the Attorney General correctly emphasized over the census to remove the citizenship question through the legislative process as soon as practical. Again, you've got some well-placed New York lawmakers in Congress, and I urge you to voice this goal to them as a priority. And so finally, the census will take place in the middle of a heated presidential primary season that's going to drown out a lot of what the Census Bureau has to say right now. Census materials are going in the mail a year from tomorrow.
Thank you.
And the surprise, Super Tuesday and Super Thursday and whatever it's called, coming at the same time, and don't forget March Madness. But it also gives me no pleasure because of the presidential campaign and what could happen. It gives me no pleasure to say this, but I fear that the 2020 census is becoming the next front in the administration's war on immigrants and immigration, and I think that's the one thing we have to really worry about. That observation is not intended to be partisan. It reflects reality and focuses squarely on concerns about the integrity of the census process. It's the nation's largest peacetime mobilization. So let's hope that our president understands how dangerous and damaging a few ill-timed, ill-advised, and misinformed tweets questioning the scope or progress of the census will be for our democracy. I know that my assessment of key policy issues is sobering. I don't want to conclude on a pessimistic note because sitting this one out is not an option. Giving up is not an option. There are no do-overs, and we have to live with the results for the next 10 years. So your efforts to engage, educate, and mobilize New York officials, faith leaders, service providers, educators, labor business leaders, grassroots advocates, and everyone in between, I think highlights your determination to overcome these many challenges. Look, we're all in this together because the Constitution says so. So to paraphrase a well-worn saying, "I think an accurate census lifts all votes. We must count the country the way it is, not the one some people want to see or wish it was." So thank you again, Secretary Rizzato, co-chair Malatres, and all commission members. Happy to take any questions. Thanks for your hospitality.[1307.58][1307.58](APPLAUSE).
Ms. Lowenthal, before I turn it over to our colleagues, you were being kind, and I feel like, given your obvious point about the budget, I'd like to editorialize just for the record so we're clear. The federal executive proposed budget has $7 billion for the census.
7.2 billion for the entire Census Bureau.
For the entire Census Bureau, and they added $8.6 billion for a wall.
From your mouth to my ears.
So I'm just going to let that sit about the importance and why these hearings are important based on the federal priorities. And I'm allowed to editorialize on that point, but I think that's an important point that you made for the entire commission. So now I'd like to turn it over to our colleagues.
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Thank you so much. It's always great to hear you. In case you don't know, we are considering kidnapping you and holding you up.
I know we're friends on Facebook, so. I don't do much on Facebook, but I always enjoy seeing your posts.
Please tell everyone what happened in the last census in terms of shifts, in terms of representation. And, you know, I know you're not a genie, but, you know, there's already been projections. Anything you could say about projections would be appreciated.
Yeah. Well, that's a good question, and, you know, it's really tough because population, I mean, you've got your population experts sitting up here, Dr. Salvo, Dr. Beveridge. I rely on them for all the latest demographic projections and trends. I mean, population is growing in almost every state. Last, before the 2010 census, found that every state had grown but Michigan, right? But there is still a relative shift in political influence because our country has not changed the number of seats in the U.S. House of Representatives since 1910. And with a slight blip, and then it went down when we added Alaska and Hawaii, you know, back in the '50s, and it went up temporarily. So there are winners and there are losers in the South and the Southwest in particular. The West are still gaining population at greater rates. Before I left Congress, I actually worked on drafting a bill with my chairman to incrementally increase the size of the House because members of Congress are representing larger and larger districts and more diverse and not always cohesive communities. So I just have to say that. I can't promise that you will save a seat in Congress, but don't forget, it's not just the representation in Congress that matters. It's having equitable representation in the state legislature for all communities, city councils, school boards, you know, at least to have fair representation as our Constitution envisions.
Well, I was wondering, you know, I think I agree with you about this hostility of the Trump administration toward immigrants. And I was struck by the statement by, in the final part, I guess, the summation in the California case, where they argued that just that the census question, the citizenship question itself, would not really harm the census that much because there's already such a toxic atmosphere that had been largely created by the Trump administration. So they're basically saying, well, we've been very, very hostile, so this citizenship question isn't going to cause that much problem. But what do you tell an immigrant? I mean, with respect to participating in the census? I mean, it's fairly well-known that, you know, according to like Pacel and others, that immigrants, undocumented immigrants or immigrants in general who are non-citizens, have a tendency to claim citizenship in the census even though they don't have it. And when you think about it from a point of view of practicality, it makes terrific sense. Because, you know, your choice is, if you're trying to avoid them, avoid, you know, what you fear, would be either to not participate, but that may trigger, you know, visits by the numerator and whatnot, or say you're a citizen. And so I'm just wondering, what do you tell immigrants? I mean, I've been in, I was involved with New York Council's 2020. They're very, very concerned about the issue of, you know, like usually you get the immigrant, you know, get various communities, get them activated, say, you know, it's our future and all that sort of stuff. But what do you do this year when they might see the last form they filled out, say, a form to regularize this, that, or the other status, or any time they get drawn into ICE, they suddenly find themselves potentially deported? How can you tell them, "Fill out this form"? I mean, what do you recommend?
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's a key question. So let me just start by saying this, and I'm going to give you a very brief answer. All the things I've told you are probably really important, but it's what all the people in this room do that really matters. It's not what I say or can say, it's what they know to say and will say to people. Because I can tell you, you know, what the messages are, but I can't be the messenger, and neither can the Census Bureau. They are relying on the people, you know, who are trusted with the community-based organization, faith-based leaders and the like. I will say this. I think it, first of all, it's very important that people understand what, let's, first of all, let's all hope, and we know that Attorney General James is going to win in the Supreme Court. So let's start there. But we do have to plan for a census with and without a citizenship question at this point. I think we have to emphasize the firewall between the Census Bureau and every other agency of government, whether it's a local housing authority, if you have too many people living in your apartment, or it's illegally subdivided, if you're worried about the federal immigration service, if you're worried about a deportation court. We do have to have the simple but clear messages, the Census Bureau has an unblemished record under current law, laws were tightened after World War II, of never violating the confidentiality of census data. It is a firewall. It is the strongest privacy protections in federal statute. It supersedes the Patriot Act and every other federal law. Any information going into the Census Bureau from administrative data sets, we didn't talk about that, but you mentioned it in your opening remarks, it's been in the news. Yes, the Census Bureau does use administrative data from other federal agencies and some state agencies to help improve the quality of the statistics it puts out. But any data sharing is not really share, it's not an exchange, it's a one-way street. Data goes in the door, the firewall comes down, never to go out again, except in anonymous statistical form that no, that you can't identify, any person, household, et cetera. So we will have to emphasize that, that your data can, not only is completely confidential, but it can never be used to harm you. but it can never be used to harm you. There's a double protection in the law. I think we're going to have to say that. We're also, if there is a citizenship question, going to show them what it says. So it does ask, are you a citizen? Are you, if so, you know, were you naturalized, you know, meaning born in the States or born outside? But it does not ask legal status. So we do want to make that clear to people.
So my question dovetails on the previous question and the answer that you just gave. You indicated that there is great distrust for the Trump administration, and this citizenship question really has created a chilling effect in immigrant and refugee communities. What, you mentioned the firewall. Is that an absolute that protects people who respond to the census questionnaire?
It does. Once you answer the census, once the Census Bureau has made sure you haven't, nobody's been double counted, and that's a problem, by the way, duplication in higher income, non-Hispanic white households are double, are overcounted, and that sort of can offset the undercount to a significant degrees of, you know. But once all that is done, your data, your personal data is stripped, and it is forever confidential. Now, when I say forever, federal law provides that after 72 years, the National Archives has your data. That probably should go up. That was passed when, you know, average life expectancy, Joe, was a little less. But at any rate, you know, people, you can get your own data. If you, a lot of people, immigrants, used to want to get their data to prove how long they had been here, like when the laws were more favorable to immigrants, interestingly. But, but just those things aside, it is, the Census Bureau cannot, and they are very trustworthy. So the problem is that the Commerce Secretary, and that's where the blame lies, it doesn't lie with the Census Bureau, made a decision that the Census Bureau disagreed with to add this question. And the Census Bureau was left to carry out a census and deal with the consequences. But I am confident that the Census Bureau will live up to its statutory requirements.
You called it an unblemished record. How do you determine that the record is unblemished on this question?
So there have been no incidences of the Census Bureau violating the confidentiality of personally identifiable, it's called, you know, personally identifiable census information. It's probably known within many communities here that during World War II, but the law was different, and the War Powers Act, which is now defunct, not, you know, in law anymore, specifically allowed this. And yes, this is a blemish, a stain on the Census Bureau's history, that it provided some low, very fine-grained data on where Japanese Americans lived at the time to what was then the War Department to help facilitate the incarceration of Japanese Americans. So it's a stain. After the World War II was over, Congress completely tightened up the Census Act, the provisions of law, to allow zero, no data sharing under any circumstances. And again, there's a double protection, there's a separate section that says your data, your individual data cannot be used to harm you. It says it cannot be used to your detriment. I think, again, but it doesn't help for me to say that to people, or maybe even you, unfortunately. You've got to get funding to the trusted messengers. Let me just say really quickly to the state again, because I do work with philanthropy. There are some great models out there, the New York funders, I've been meeting with them for a couple of years. Dr. Salvo, Joe and I and Melody were up in Buffalo a couple, a year and a half ago, with funders, talking about what philanthropy could do. There's a great model in Michigan, philanthropy, the Michigan Council of Grantmaking, whatever they call it in Michigan, said to the governor, you put X amount of dollars and the state budget will match it. He did, they did. And now they also have put up another $4 million, and Michigan's, you know, bit smaller, but they put up another $4 million, and they're funneling it through the Michigan Association of Nonprofits, and they're doing the grant making to CBOs. I like this model. But there are other models out there, but I urge you to partner with philanthropy. Having said that, it's still the federal government's responsibility to pay for a census that counts everyone. So we do need your voices down in Washington, telling Congress, the Trump administration's request for the Census Bureau is dead on arrival. It's $8 million, or $8 billion or bust for the 2020 census alone.
Yeah. Can I just make a quick comment? We are planning to have representatives of philanthropy at a future meeting of the commission. I'm not quite sure which date yet, but it'll be soon.
Great. They're very engaged, and they know, you know, they've been involved in Long Island, you know, Community Trust, New York Community Trust, New York Foundation, and the upstate funders as well. Thank you again, really appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, now we're going to move to our public comments section. This is where you'll have a three-minute time limit, and the time will be kept up here at the front. So we're going to start with Carrie Cecil, Arab American Family Support Center.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to begin by thanking the New York State Complete Count Commission for inviting community-based organizations to participate and to comment on the upcoming census. My name is Carrie Cecil. I am the Director of Development and Communications at the Arab American Family Support Center, and I am honored to testify today on behalf of the immigrant and refugee families we serve throughout New York City. At the Arab American Family Support Center, we have strengthened immigrant and refugee families since 1994. We promote well-being, prevent violence, prepare families to learn, work, and succeed, and amplify the voices of marginalized populations. Our organization serves all who are in need, but over 25 years of experience, we have gained cultural and linguistic competency, serving New York's growing Arab, Middle Eastern, Muslim, and South Asian populations. As a culturally and linguistically competent, community-based organization, and a trusted resource for immigrants and refugees throughout New York City, AAFSC is committed to ensuring an accurate count in Census 2020. It will impact the number of votes in New York has in the Electoral College, ultimately influencing broader legislation and leadership. Further, it would, of course, determine funding and resources over the next 10 years. Arab, Middle Eastern, Muslim, and South Asian immigrant communities cannot afford to lose already limited resources. As an organization that intimately understands the extent of these community needs, this matters deeply to us. We know that many Arab, Middle Eastern, Muslim, and South Asian community members are suspicious and fearful of the census or are unaware of its importance. Many of our community members have told us that they fear the census will be used to target immigrants and will result in deportation and family separation. This is no surprise. The families that we serve are already dealing with deportation and family separation daily. Many of our program participants come from countries targeted by a series of executive orders culminating in the Presidential Proclamation 9645, popularly known as the travel ban, which now blocks entrance of individuals from Yemen, Iran, and Somalia. Far more were threatened by campaign promises to ban Muslims from coming to the U.S., and all immigrants to continue to suffer consequences of hostile narratives that drive policies and practices targeting foreign-born populations. Recently proposed changes to definition of public charge have also made community members more reluctant to take advantage of services and opportunities rightfully available to Further, the census remains far from inclusive. Despite years of advocacy, a category for Middle East and North African will go, will be, not be available under racial or ethnic identity on the 2020 form. Instead, people from these groups will be instructed to select white, a term that few use to self-identify and which many feel inaccurately portrays their lived experiences. While this is not subject to change for Census 20, it is important to understand the lack of inclusion is a barrier to participation.
Thank you.
What we'll do, we'll add your entire testimony, if you have it, to the record. And if it gets posted, so we'll add it, okay?
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Monica Vargas, Naleo Educational Fund.
Hi. Co-chairs Rosado and Malatras, and commissioner members, on behalf of the National Association of Latino-Elected and Appointed Officials, Naleo Educational Fund, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony regarding Census 2020 and the Bronx Bureau. A complete and accurate count of the residents of the Bronx, of all New York's state, is in next decennial enumeration and will help ensure that the Bureau and the state obtain their representation that they deserve in our nation democracy. Naleo Educational Fund, since the 1990 census, has conducted outreach campaigns to promote a full and accurate count of the Latino community. Naleo Educational Fund has also been a member of the U.S. Census Bureau Nationals Advisory Committee since 2000, and currently sits on the Bureau's National Advisory Committee on racial, ethnic, and other populations. Naleo is also the co-chair of the Leadership Conference on Civil and Human Rights Census Task Force, and of the National Hispanic Leadership Agenda Census Task Force. A robust statewide outreach is necessary to ensure a full count of the residents in the Bronx and the state of New York, because the stakes are so high for the state. At the beginning of the 20th century, New York's robust population grew relatively to other states, resulting in significant gains in the number of seats in the U.S. House of Representatives after each decade's reapportionment, to the point of having 45 seats. However, since the 50s, the population increases in other states outpaced those of New York. And following the 2010 reapportionment, the number of New York seats in the House has declined to 27, and we are about to lose one or two more seats. The 2020 census of the Bronx and New York are at high risk. The accuracy of the Census Bureau count of New Yorkers and Bronx residents in 2020 are in jeopardy due to the prolonged insufficient congressional funding for sound preparations and adoption of untested last-minute changes to census materials. The state and the Bureau must embrace opportunities to invest in increasing census response of the will, or they will suffer the negative effects of problems facing the decennial count. New York is already persistently undercounted, with about nearly 149,000 net individuals missed in the 2010 census. Therefore, the Bronx needs a robust Census 2020 outreach effort. There are no second chances in the decennial census, and the Bronx must take action to ensure that really, that really challenges encountered by the Census Bureau between the 2012 and the present do not impair the 2020 count. There are two points that are so important, and I just want to brief them. It's necessary to have ethnic media and many CBOs on the, because they are the most critical resources to effectively engage residents in the 2020 enumeration, because they are the only ones that have the trust of the community, the hard-count communities in the state.
Thank you.
The rest of the testimony is there.
And if, just for folks, if you didn't bring a copy for the record, please just check in with those gentlemen at the table and send your email or whatever, so we can have a copy of it entered into the record. Thank you.
Lisa Maria Nero James, NAACP Jamaica Chapter.
I have more observations than testimony, and it was just interesting, while just sitting here, listening to all of the presentations, just the, one of the points that was brought up was connectivity. And as I was sitting there, going through my iPad and my phone, just not being able to even get online. So either through Hostos, or through Link NYC, or even by my own optimum hotspot, I was not able to get online. So if that's just here, in this forum, that just speaks volume. Also, the NAACP, which is the National Association for the Advancement of Color People, they were in the process of suing the U.S. Department of Commerce, and that's, of course, to force it to expand its census outreach in the hard-to-reach areas. Now, what I saw interesting, and again, you use the information that's in front of you, and I noticed that it said in this piece of information, it says credible and trusted messengers in the paperwork that was given to us at the front desk. And it says that everyone listens to the weatherman. And I just thought that was interesting, because my husband always said, the weatherman is the only one who can get his job wrong and keep it. The second one, it says Zuckerberg pops up and tells you about changes in Facebook. Is this the same Zuckerberg that just gave all the information about the African-American voters to? Yes, okay, next. Also, it says, do a video group and send it out right now, so it will go viral amongst all the hoaxes that go on over the internet, as we just heard about the dark net and everything that's going through. But otherwise, again, the main issue is so that we can ensure that the communities of color are properly counted in order to protect our legislative strength. So again, I was more observations, just to come here and basically give that information on behalf of the NAACP Jamaica Chapter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question? Dominicanos USA.
I'm going to be as quick as I can to re-manage in terms of what we have here. My name is Eric Questa. I'm the Executive Director of Dominicanos USA. Dominicanos USA was founded in 2013, right here in the South Bronx, in this particular school, Ostas Community College. We have launched, and our goal was to register and mobilize Dominican-Americans, and so far we have been able to register more than 160,000, mostly here in New York, New York, and through the Northeast. But I just want to say that based on the work that we have done, it has been done in part using one of its kind model, Dominican model, that has opened to develop in part in being able to identify Dominicans, you know, in terms of individual household spaces, and at the same time, you know, having the richest database on Dominican-Americans by any organization in the United States. Through our Get Out of Vote efforts, you know, we have gone through a total of more than 715,000 times through doorknocks, phone calls, text messaging, and direct mail. I say all of this because it's so important in order for us to connect, in terms of how important we know that the Census Bureau would be. Being out in the community and participating in getting out the vote, we started a naturalization project that has been very successful. So this has given us the ability for us to really understand and really work within the Dominican community. According to the 2017 estimate from the Census Bureau, there are 2 million Dominicans, Dominicans or people of Dominican descent in the United States, 870,000 in the state of New York, and 720,000 in the city of New York. Here in the Bronx, where we are, has the largest Dominican population. We are 355,000. We have seen the shift coming from Washington Heights to the Bronx, and it's so important for us to really, you know, understand that we know there will be a big challenge in obtaining a full count in the 2020 census. So one of the things that we have, we know specifically, that gentrification and displacement has been a very important part, where we know there's apartments that have been converted in rooms, and that would be very difficult in terms of being out in the community. We also understand that there have been some studies by CUNY, Dominican Studies Institute, the controller, that would be very helpful in the testimony we have left, that really could help us. So data is very important. Social media is very important. Being able to really participate and invest in media, ethnic media, not only, you know, the mayor, Univision, and Telemundo, but the local channels and televisions that our community is seeing on a daily basis. Overcrowding is a big issue, we understand, in terms of the housing. We have seen the overcrowding in the city. The New York City Controller's Office, you know, a study with the largest proportion of crowded dwelling in, serving New York City, was in the Bronx, where 12.4% of all dwelling units were crowded in 2013, up from 11.1% in 2005. In addition, this report stated that from 2005 to 2013, the rate of severe crowding more than 1.5% per room rose by 78.7% in the Bronx. So I will provide you, the citizenship questions is a big issue. Language is something that we need, and I would like to thank Joe Salvo, because when we first started five years ago, he was very helpful. Without the Census Bureau, we would not be where we are today. And finally, I think the idea of foundation and corporations that could afford to be part of, being part of the 2020 census count and getting those funding would be very important for us to really understand our community and being out there. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Mary Lou, Maria Galván.
Sheila.
Sheila?
Yeah.
Yaziri Tobar?
I'm sorry, he didn't sign in. I have, I have a.
Oh, I signed in.
Okay. I apologize, it's not on the list. Can we let him go first?
Sure, no problem.
I'll be fast. Testimony for the record, a copy for each of you.
Thank you.
My voice projects. I should have been a singer instead. I'm an attorney. I'm an attorney, so be clear in advance if you don't believe me, but I'm going to stick to facts.
I believe so, sure.
Good evening and greetings. My name is Jorge Vasquez, and I'm an associate counsel with Latino Justice Prode. Headquartered here in New York, Latino Justice champions an equitable society by using the power of the law together with advocacy and education. Since its founding in 1972, Latino Justice has been involved in state, federal litigation regarding Latino political representation, voting rights, including constitutionality challenges, discriminatory, redistricting plans, and other means that disenfranchise the Latino community. I have several points, but to speed up time in case anyone has questions, I'll finish this in less than 60 seconds. Throughout the United States, Latinos make up the largest minority ethnic group of voters. It's estimated by 2020, there'll be 31 million. In New York State, Latinos make up the majority of minority groups. This is important for several reasons. The first reason, there's a federal law court, Section 203, that requires individuals who participate in the census who speak a foreign language to later be able to get ballots in that language. Currently, in the state of New York, there are many counties, even with Latino representation, that do not have mandates to provide ballots in Spanish. Finally, talking about a piece of the pie. When we talk about the largest minority group, and we talk about the $700 billion in Congress, it's important to realize that when we're talking about educational loans and grants, 34% of those are given to Latinos of Title I grants. 21% of SNAP benefits are received by Latinos. National school lunch programs, Latinos represent 24% of those who receive that. Section 8 housing, Latinos represent 16%. Medicaid, 20%. When we're talking about children's health insurance programs, 60% of all eligible Latinos participate in those programs. Latino Justice was recently granted a cert to provide an amicus on behalf of all Latinos to the United States Supreme Court with regards to the impact of citizenship question I have. I'm leading that. I'm here, feel free to ask me questions for the next 20 seconds or so, if you have any. If not, feel free, contact me later on.
Would you submit your brief to the Supreme Court to us for the record?
Sure, that's due on April 1st, so we'll submit it on April 1st.
If you, if we get an advanced copy, no, we're kidding. You can just submit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for providing us with this space. My name is Yaziri Tovar, and I'm a member of Make the Road New York and a Bronx resident. I'm here today because the Trump administration is seeking to intimidate immigrant families and communities and erase families like mine, and that's why we need New York to step it up and make sure that everybody is counted. As mentioned before, the census is the country's way of knowing how many people live in each city, county, and state, and it's critical, it's a critical source of information that communities nationwide rely on for political representation and allocation of resources that our communities need. About a year ago, I learned that the Department of Justice, led by former Attorney General Jeff Sessions, had requested the Census Bureau add a citizen question to the 2020 census, threatening a democracy and putting the entire census in jeopardy. Adding a citizen question is a clear attempt by the Trump administration to undercount and silence immigrant communities. I am a dreamer. My husband is a citizen. I have family members who are citizens and some who are undocumented. It is families like mine who may not want to answer the census because they will not want to put their families at risk. A coalition of states and our community organizations, including Make the Road New York, has taken this issue up to the court, and this past January, the court sided with us and rejected this reckless attempt to add the citizen question to the 2020 census, and as we know, the decision will now be heard by the Supreme Court in April. But as we wait, but as we wait the U.S. Supreme Court decision, New York needs to prepare for the 2020 census, whether citizen question or not. It is not just a citizen question, it's also about underfunding, underplanning, and understaffing at the federal level that will hurt the census. It is critical that where the federal government lags behind, New York State shows leadership. As a recent report by the Fiscal Policy Institute shows, to get a full, fair count, New York must include the $40 million for community-based outreach for the census in our state budget this year, in addition to funds for state and local government outreach. This cannot wait for next year's budget, because then it would be too late. New York needs to properly fund community-based outreach, because it's these trusted messengers who will maximize participation across the state to ensure a full, accurate count of immigrant communities and working-class people of color, and it's these people who my family will open the door to. As a Bronx resident, I know my community is one of the hardest-account communities in the country. This upcoming census, people will be able to submit their responses online, yet between 2013 and 2017, 24.3 of the Bronx County households had no internet access. With the Bronx having a small back, having a mailbox of respond rate of just a bit over 15%, with a quarter of its residents having no access to internet, the Bronx is at risk of being undercounted and underrepresented. So our communities are under attack by the administration that is using every tool at its disposal to undermine and undercount our people, and it's our duty and responsibility to lead in this issue and make sure everyone is counted. My community deserves to be counted. The Bronx deserves to be counted. New York deserves a full, accurate count, and we need to step it up to do it.
Thank you. Terry Kishler? Hannah Collins?
Good evening. My name is Hannah Collins, and I'm the Senior Marketing, Senior Manager for Marketing and Communications at Community Resource Exchange, CRE. I thank the Commission co-chairs and all of the Commission members for holding these important public hearings across the state. It is clear that collectively, we all want a smooth, accurate, and responsible count, which will further strengthen our city and our state. CRE, just so you know, is a Manhattan-based nonprofit that provides consulting services to social sector organizations. We serve over 500 nonprofits every year, both here in the state and across the country. I will now reiterate some points that have already been made tonight about the importance of CBOs in the census count. These organizations are trusted by individuals living in communities that are hardest to count: high immigrant populations, non-English-speaking, vulnerable populations, people dealing with homelessness, and people living in illegally-divided apartments. New York State must invest in these nonprofits, because they have the community connections that you need to establish to ensure a more accurate count. They need the resources and investment from the city and the state that ensures they can amplify their education and outreach efforts to ensure a complete count in 2020. Many of the people who we want to reach, will not speak with government workers, will remain hidden from them. The controversy over the citizenship question, which has been touched upon a lot, has created sufficient and lingering concern among people already reticent to participate. This is where New York City's robust nonprofit sector can and should play a role, because community-based organizations have already forged relationships and built trust among the communities that need to be reached. A recent poll found that 46% of New Yorkers say that hearing from a local nonprofit organization that works in their community would make a difference in whether they choose to participate in the census or not. These local nonprofits could hire the newspapers, social media, and even religious leaders as drivers of census participation. And perhaps most critically, younger residents, 18 to 34, a group that tends to be least likely to complete the census, indicated the greatest trust in nonprofits as census messengers. So the important point that I want to make tonight is that nonprofits operate on razor-thin margins with rigorous compliance requirements to do very specific programmatic work. Anything above and beyond that work is not resourced, yet these groups have the trust and ongoing connections with the communities they serve that are needed for an accurate count. Funding these groups for census outreach would allow the staff time to help with the count by bolstering or implementing new community outreach programs focused on the census. These are all the concerns that my organization is hearing from nonprofits that we serve as well, that they will not be funded to do the work they need to do to ensure an accurate count, to keep their own doors open, and to ensure funding that they need to keep their services going. By engaging with the nonprofit sector and investing not just time but money to support their census initiatives, you can achieve a much more accurate record of who is living in New York, what their needs are, and how all of us can ultimately serve to strengthen our city and state. I thank you for your time and your service.
Rosanna Minaya? Luri Daniel-Favors? Rachel Bloom?
Good evening, Chairs Malatras and Rosado, and distinguished members of the New York State Complete Count Commission. My name is Rachel Bloom, and I am the Director of Public Policy and Programs at Citizens Union, and I serve on the Steering Committee of New York Counts 2020 as the co-chair of the State and Local Government Committee. We thank you for holding this meeting on census preparation throughout New York and for giving Citizens Union the opportunity to publicly share recommendations with you. I'm going to skip through a bunch of the explanation stuff. We are a nonpartisan good-government group dedicated to reforming New York City and state governments to foster accountability, accessibility, and transparency, and the census is one of our top priorities as an institution. I am pleased to be here tonight representing both organizations, and I'm delighted that the Commission has been fully appointed. Everyone in this room, and who has been and here and left, shares the same goal of a fair and accurate census count throughout the entire state of New York. The challenges facing the census are large and numerous: the first digital census, severe funding shortages, limited field tests, and the potential inclusion of a citizenship question, just to name a few. In the face of these challenges, the work before the Commission is more important than ever. New York cannot afford an undercount politically or financially. We are at risk of losing seats in the U.S. House of Representatives and billions of dollars, and I don't need to go into that for all of you, but I will say it's approximately $2,600 per person per year in New York. These dollars fund key programs like SNAP, Head Start, and Medicaid, and every dollar that the state pays towards ensuring a fair and accurate census count will be paid back in multiples. Our recommendations are to adequately fund the census, adequately fund census operations in New York in the fiscal year 20 budget. Now, we've heard a lot of talk about $40 million for community-based outreach. That is based on a number from the Fiscal Institute 2018 report about what we would adequately need, but that is not the sum of what money we need toward the census in the state of New York. There needs to be other budget allocations. There needs to be adequate and substantial funding for public education that the state needs to be doing, outreach in communities throughout, including things from media buys, printing, and translation services to multiple languages. The other thing I want to stress is that you should really be embracing New York's nonprofit community. New York has the most vibrant nonprofit community in the country, and already several hundred organizations have come together to work on the census. But to effectively harness the power of these organizations, clear and accurate information about what the state is planning to do, what gaps will fall to community groups to fill in, and what resources the state will be providing are needed. And finally, I'm going to ask you to please share information as quickly as possibly. The census, as we know, is rapidly approaching, and work that needs to be undertaken is vast. We need, we've been planning for a long time, and the Commission must work swiftly to make recommendations, and really to ensure that the importance of properly carrying out the census is understood among leadership in Albany. I am so grateful for your work. My organization is so grateful for your work, and I thank you for the time to testify tonight.
Thank you.
And longer, longer has been—
Let me also let you know that testimony may be emailed to hearing@labor.ny.gov. Hakeem Elliott?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Hakeem Elliott. I'm from the Center for Law and Social Justice, and I'm currently doing, since, we're currently doing census outreach across all five boroughs to ensure a full, complete, and fair count of people of African descent, because they are the most unaccounted community. So as we know, the census is not just a survey. It's, the data, the data determines the needs of your community and disseminates money and resources to those community, over $700 billion a year, to be exact. I've come across way too many people who may know what the census is, but they do not know that the census is tied to billions of dollars that they can use to fund their communities. As we know, unaccounted communities have resulted in schools being underfunded, inefficient public transportation, and the availability of affordable housing, which is a crisis here in New York City, and also unemployment, I mean, employment opportunities. Census information also dictates how much political power your community has, and New York right now is in danger of losing congressional seats. The Bronx in particular is a hard-to-count area, especially places like Eastchester Heights, Williams Bridge Community, Wakefield Community, and even our neighbors here in Mount Vernon. In some areas, we have counts of less than 45%, which is abysmal and unacceptable, and these communities have high populations of people of African descent, Hispanic community, and immigration community that have gone unnoticed. So we are seeking to not only fill, for people not only to fill out the census, but help raise awareness, talk to your neighbors about the importance, importance of the census, assure people, particularly of immigrant community, that their, that their information is safe and secure. Also, join CLHSJ's Black Leadership Advisory Coalition, where you can help advocate for funds regarding the census, create and promote workshops and training programs, and also take part in our outreach community, our translation community, and our youth community. Especially, our youth have been some of the most unaccounted in New York. We've had, I would say, about 1.5 million children under the age of 18 being unaccounted. So if you can reach out to your schools, your local daycares, where, thank you.
Thank you. Melody Lopez?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
You can pull that up, see.
Sorry, yeah, I am tall, aren't I? There you go. So, good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity this evening. My name is Melody Lopez. I am the Executive Director of the New York Civic Engagement Table. The New York Civic Engagement Table brings together a community of over 60 grassroots organizations across issue areas and regions in New York State. We are a resource hub dedicated to creating a better, more just and democratic world through year-round civic engagement, and we provide data, tools, and training to community organizations to support their civic engagement campaigns. And additionally, we, our groups have extensive experience mobilizing communities, and we have done things like door-to-door canvassing, peer-to-peer texting, for example, in the 2018 elections, we texted over a million voters across the state. So we are working really hard with our partners to tap into that civic engagement infrastructure in preparation for census outreach. The 2020 census may be one of the most challenging in recent history, with the looming possibility of a citizenship question, a question that serves to intimidate immigrant communities, inadequate investment in the Census Bureau from the federal government, an emphasis on an online response when many community members have limited access to broadband. With these hurdles and the enormity of what's at stake, we're advocating for an investment of at least $40 million, as many folks in the room have been saying this evening, in addition to funds for state and local government outreach, but we're specifically concerned with funds and support for community-based organizations. This outreach would prove critical for ensuring that every New Yorker is counted and that communities across the state receive the resources and political representation they deserve. The current administration has sown fear and uncertainty in many communities, and that combined with a general hesitancy for many New Yorkers to share information with the federal government could seriously jeopardize a full and fair count in communities that are often undercounted, especially communities of color. That is why it is absolutely essential, organizations who are trusted messengers in these communities play the biggest role possible in maximizing participation in the census this year. And of course, the consequences for undercounting our communities would be dire. According to research done by the George Washington Institute of Public Policy, in fiscal year 2016, New York received over $73 billion through 55 federal spending programs guided by data derived from the 2010 census. So federal funding, economic development, and fair representation are all at stake in the 2020 census, which is why the state must make the investment now, so that community-based groups have the opportunity to plan and get the word out early. Next year will be far, far too late. So community groups who have a deep understanding and trusting relationships with their constituencies are best equipped to get the word out about the census, and they need the resources in order to be successful, which is why we're urging the state to prioritize making this investment. Oh, my gosh, two seconds. So thank you very much— Oh my gosh, two seconds, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Shamir Settle? Monica Robles?
My name is Monica Robles and I'm a teacher and volunteer coordinator of Make the Road New York, and I need your help to make sure that the Trump administration is not successful at intimidating and undercounting the many communities I support, work with, and volunteer with. I am here because we need New York to step up to make sure that our communities are counted in the census in 2020. Every 10 years, the census measures how many people live in each city, county, and state. Our communities nationwide rely on this source for political representation and the allocation of critical resources that will impact their ability to survive. The Trump administration has made a request to add a citizenship status question to the upcoming census, which is clearly intended to undercut and silence our communities, and it will have a great impact on our families, on families I work with who are citizens, as well as undocumented immigrants. Make the Road New York, along other organizations, have taken the issue with the court. Two court decisions have now rejected the Trump citizenship question request, and now it's up to the Supreme Court to do the same. But New Yorkers cannot wait until the Supreme Court makes a decision, our state needs to prepare for the 2020 census right now. Besides a citizenship question, we know that underfunding, underplanning, and understaffing at the federal level will hurt the census. New York State's leadership will be critical in making an impact on whether our communities are counted or not. We know through a report by the Fiscal Policy Institute that to get a full and fair count, New York must include $40 million for community-based outreach for the census in our state budget this year, in addition to the funds for state and local government outreach. This cannot wait for next year's budget, we need to do the outreach right now. New York needs to properly fund community-based outreach, because our communities trust us, and we will help maximize participation across the state to ensure full and accurate count of our immigrant communities and working-class people of color. As an immigrant, a teacher, a coordinator of immigrant volunteers in the city, I know that our communities are one of the hardest-to-count communities in the country. If we do not prepare for the 2020 census, New York's political representation in Congress and critical survival services are on the line. Every community deserves to be counted. The Bronx deserves to be counted, New York deserves a full, fair, and accurate count, and New York needs to invest the resources to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Omar Suarez?
So, my name is Omar Suarez, I'm with Dominicanos USA as well. I'll be sure not to repeat anything that my colleague mentioned earlier. As a Bronx resident, thank you so much for hosting this hearing in the Bronx. Obviously, we are home to many hard-to-count communities and people who may be overlooked by traditional forms of outreach. I don't want to repeat much that was mentioned earlier this evening. Obviously, many of the people who came in and testified made a strong case for why the census is an important undertaking and why New York should invest $40 million in community-based outreach. We do support that initiative. I do want to add that whatever happens down that road, we stand at the ready to do everything within our power to do the, what we can to get our community out, to be counted and ensure that, that they are counted, regardless of whatever the state decides to do. I mean, it's very clear, I think everyone that has stood up here has made it clear, the federal government has fallen down on the job. It falls to New York, state government, local government, to fill in that gap, and wherever you can't fill in, we will come in regardless of whatever you do. It's not just, I want to push back on one thing that was said, which is that community-based organizations are the most trusted. That's not necessarily true, the most trusted people are your friends and neighbors and family members, but we, as community-based organizations, we have the imperative to mobilize people and give them the tools so that they can be that advocate within their own network of family and friends. And that's what we try to do. I mean, we do use the tools, WhatsApp, and other forms of social media, you know, where we have conversations going on consistently, sharing information, giving them, once again, the tools that they do need, so that they can sort of be that advocate within their own personal networks, and that's, that's our model for making this kind of change. As far as the statement that was made about, that has been repeated again and again about potentially losing one or two congressional seats, I think we should just reject that paradigm entirely. There's absolutely no reason why New York elected officials or anyone in a position of power should just accept that paradigm, that we're gonna lose, we're a growing state, why would we take less representation? Why would we accept that in any way? Congressional districts are already going up towards 800,000 people. Anyone here that's had, tried to make an appointment with your elected official, it's ridiculous. We shouldn't stand for this at all. Whatever happens in this count, there is no way that we should accept a loss in congressional representation in New York. And as New Yorkers, which I assume you all are, none of you should be okay with that either, and no one in this room should be okay with that. So I think immediately we should reject that paradigm, and I got about seven seconds, so thank you.
Thank you. Ricardo Sharp? Going once? Luis Lebron? Nina Robbins?
First, I want to thank you and the entire Complete Count Commission for inviting concerned citizens and community-based organizations to participate in this conversation tonight. I'm a proud Brooklyn resident, and I'm the Program Director of FYI. We're a small nonprofit advertising group, and we help other community-based organizations and local government agencies better communicate important public service announcements, and we have a deep interest in being a part of helping the Commission disseminate culturally relevant messaging in hard-to-reach neighborhoods. Our cornerstone service is our digital PSA network. It is an independent, community-driven advertising platform that's comprised of over 100 digital screens, strategically placed in high-traffic nonprofits throughout New York City and Westchester. We have digital signage in community colleges, and senior centers, community centers, WIC program centers, hospitals, and we're growing. And we offer local government agencies and community-based organizations access to the citywide media distribution channel for free. Since 2005, we've saved New York's nonprofit community $9 million in media distribution costs, and we would love to be a part of your census outreach strategy and commit our resources and our access to ensuring a complete count. We also provide affordable media-buying services with a focus on local ethnic and community news outlets, and would love to be a part of producing the media-buy package with the Commission. That's all. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Just a quick question, are you only, are you only in the five boroughs?
We're in Westchester as well.
Okay. Can you give us your contact information?
Absolutely.
Great.
Thank you very much for joining us tonight. We really appreciate all your information and effort. Next week, March 20th, we will be in Sullivan County at the Sullivan County Community College in Locks, Sherrill, Drake, 7:00 PM. Thank you for the Commission members and all the staff who put it together, and we deem this hearing adjourned.